Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council Regular Session Agenda Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at seven P M. here in the council chambers. We'll go ahead and after calling the meeting to order, begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, all right, welcome. Welcome and thank you for coming tonight to all of those that are here in person and for those who are watching online, live or at a later point. After our Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to go ahead and move down the agenda. We have a ceremonial item this evening, and I believe our librarian is here to talk about that.
I would like to invite Christopher Tanner to be recognized.
Hello, congratulations.
This evening, we are recognizing Chris for five years of service at the North Bend Public Library. I really like working with Chris, and I think all of his coworkers would say the same. Chris manages our interlibrary loan program, which allows people to borrow books that might be rare or unusual from libraries across the country. And Chris does an excellent job of managing all the little details of those requests, as well as the relationships that are required to make that program run smoothly. So we really appreciate him. Chris is really dedicated to his work at the library, and I regularly hear from coworkers about Chris pitching in when an extra set of hands are needed. So we're really lucky to have him. So I want to say congratulations and thank you for five years of service.
We do have a certificate for you to give to him, and we do like traditions of photos, too. Yes, should we take it? Should we take your photos? Okay, all right. What's that?
No speech.
So of course, while we're having everybody to come down here, I will ask you questions. You work for the library. What is your favorite book of all time?
Favorite book of all time is very difficult question to answer.
Three.
You know what? It's not my favorite, but the one I think of, I read the first one, The Hobbit. Like third, fourth grade, I read that to you in class. Then you catch it on your own, start reading it, and you know, it was really. And you read it again and again.
Yeah.
One.
Oh, good.
All right, so you're gonna have to come closer.
I'm glad nobody asked me that.
It helps, it helps, it helps. Don't you look like so false festive with your colors? Oh, I was talking about Counselor Schultz. I guess I should have been more specific. So believe it or not, I know this seems like I take a lot. And I do. Because I think the last time we had that large group in here. Out of all of those, I could only use one. So congratulations. Thank you.
Somebody always.
Okay. All right, so next on the agenda after the ceremonial item, we move to number item three, which is our consent calendar. Do we have a motion from the council?
We accept the consent calendar.
At a first from Counselor Gall, a second from Counselor Gar Boden. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four on the agenda is public comment. And I believe I have one here in person and then one to read as well, correct? Okay. So before we begin, I'd like to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak or three minutes for me to read the item into the record. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't a time for us to dialogue with you, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of any action that is needed. So first I have Matt Willbanks, and we have a recorder up here. You could please state your name and the city that you live in.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Matt Willbanks. I live in Coos Bay. So I'm here tonight actually representing Coos County Neighborhood Watch. As some of you might know, especially Counselor Jones, we held our homelessness and crime town hall at the Egyptian Theater last month. Counselor Jones was nice enough to actually be on our panel and provide, you know, some governmental aspects and insights. So we really very much appreciate it. Thank you so much. What I have here, there's a thumb driving with all three exciting hours of the town hall on there. I mean, she had to sit through it. So if you guys want to watch it, you know, feel free. There's a lot of good public comment in there. We had everything from business owners to a lady who currently or previously was an addict herself and currently has a very fairly young son living on the street in Empire, currently in addiction right now. So a lot of good information there. So that's the main reason I was here. The only other thing I wanted to say is actually to give you guys some kudos. Usually when I'm in here, I'm kind of bashing people. So I want to give, you know, credit where credit is due. The way you guys have handled the homelessness and camping issues in particular is so far and above better than the way Coos Bay is currently handling things. Not to bash the people working in Coos Bay, they're doing what they can with what they have, but you've chosen, I think, better solutions to what's going on currently. Nothing's perfect. Obviously, you know, the issues down on Harbor Street, you know, a lot of people are pissed off, but you know, you you can only please half the people half the time, the other people other half the other time. So it it's much better. I've noticed a stark difference between Coos Bay and North Bend when all the people are forced to camp in a few particular areas. Previously, the whole town was just a mess. Now, at least you only have a couple of select areas that are a little messy. And then I also want to give kudos to the police department, not just because I know a bunch of those guys. I know guys on Coos Bay, too. But they've been busting their butts, particularly down on Harbor Street, dealing with that. I've seen it. I go down there and I'll see them dealing with the stuff. So it's been a lot better. There's still more work to do there, obviously, but you guys get a lot of kudos and, you know, keep at it. So I appreciate it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Something in particular.
Okay. Then I have another item to read here. And it looks like it is to the city reporters, kind of begins here on this page as well. Okay. All right. And this looks like it's from, it's Gloria Titus. Okay. And she'll go ahead and start my timer now. Dear City Council, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your service to the community. Community. You are all working very hard, solving problems that are thrown at you with very few resources, and I do appreciate your hard work. I wanted to follow up on my message from last month regarding our homelessness and give special thanks to the city administrator for taking the time to address my concerns regarding our homeless population. I thought your response was very good and answered many questions. To clarify, I was born and raised in North Bend. I own a home in North Bend, and my family has deep roots here on both sides, and many were pioneers in this area. So I have a vested interest in North Bend, and I do care about my hometown. I also care about our homeless people as much as any other person in this community, and I'm frustrated, like many of us, that we can't, we can't seem to solve this problem. I look around and I see land everywhere in the county, plenty of places to build, and yet we don't. And yet we don't and haven't over the years to keep up our growth population. I believe with all my heart that every person alive on the planet deserves a roof over their head as much as food to eat and healthcare. I look in on the city council meetings to see what you're discussing and working on from time to time. And I can't say I do every single month, but I check often. Having worked in corporate America my entire career, many of those years were difficult years for the companies I worked for, including cost reductions, reductions, layoffs, budget cuts, working lean, having to do more with less and be nimble. So when I look at the problems that you're facing, I would expect to see some of those things happening here, too, but I don't. I'm not saying we should lay off anyone, but I would expect some sacrifices to be made with programs, cost reduction efforts, and budget cuts with regular city business. I think the citizens of North Bend are tired of having to fund extra for the police with the increases to our water bill in recent years and increases in the city's budgets. Those increases are still felt by many of our retired citizens and fixed incomes, and many are still upset about them. So my question is, is what are we doing and what are we spending to actually fix the homeless problem? It seems like we are spending money to affect Band-Aids on the problem every month with the extra officers, extra cars, extra garbage fees, extra sanitations, instead of spending money to build more housing. Wouldn't it be smarter to spend spend towards fixing the problem? Like I said last month, this is a crisis, but I don't see it being handled as much. I understand housing is only one part of the problem. North Bend will need help from the state and federal government to fund big initiatives, but we can still contribute to fixing the problem with our city dollars rather than the Band-Aid approach. If we only, if we can only afford to fund one extra bed, it's still an extra bed and it helps. Then, and when there are problems this big, this big, then much scrutiny will occur from the community. And the council will need to be accountable. Finish this last paragraph. For every dollar spent elsewhere, that's how I feel anyways. I can't speak for everyone, but it's like, but it's like the mayor only wants to address fun business and doesn't want to get dirty and tackle real problems. That needs to be addressed and putting a plan together and fixes the the big problems. What is your plan to build more houses that helps the homelessness? And in this, in closing, I'd like to thank you all for your countless hours of service to the city of North Bend and for taking time to listen to. All right, so that is the two public comments that I have. And that then takes us to number five, which is a public hearing ordinance number two zero seven two and ordinance vacating portions of alleyway contained within block ten. Schaefer's addition to Central Place, Coos County, Oregon, page thirty-eight of our packets, and I have a script in front of me, and I know our attorney is online as well. So let's see. So public hearing. This is the time for our public hearing on ordinance two zero seven two and ordinance vacating portions of alleyway contained within block ten. Schaefer's addition to Central Place, Coos County, Oregon. At this time, we'll open the hearing. I will ask the counselors, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report? Okay, some hearing done. Will the staff please present the report? I will have our city planner come forward.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, before you this evening is a vacation, as we discussed last night. And it's a relatively simple one in block ten there between Ash and Cedar and Wade and Kenny. And it's an unimproved right-of-way that's, you know, been platted and never opened or developed. It's currently being used as an extension of people's rear yards. And there's no known utilities through their proper notice has been published in the World Paper and on our city website. And notice has been mailed out to the affected property owners. There's been no comments or objections, and staff supports the recommendation to approve the vacation.
Okay, all right. I'll now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There is a three, there is a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anybody here for public testimony? Okay. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of ordinance two zero seven two? That was weird. I looked up and he was gone like that. It's like he disappeared. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance? No. Okay. I'll now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for the staff? Counselor Nordoff.
I've just had a question. Does does the person proposing this vacation? It is, does, do they acquire the property or is there payment for the property or? I'm just kind of curious. I've I have not dealt with this before.
Absolutely. So no no property transaction occurs with this. The adjoining property owners along a unimproved right-of-way have the underlying property rights up to the center line of that right-of-way. And so basically what this does is removes our easement and just all of the adjoining property owners go up to the center line of that easement.
That explains it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Right.
All right. So if there's no further questions, and at this time, no further questions, then I'll go ahead and close, close the public hearing. Okay. And so once we close the public hearing, I know, again, our city attorney is line online. I can move to number six, which is our ordinance two zero seven two.
Yeah, hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Yeah, so you can move to the next agenda item. You could get a staff report if you'd wish, or we could, we could look for a a motion to have the first reading by title only. And and so before we get into that, I just figured I would, I would give a brief update on ordinance adoption. I know it was discussed a little bit yesterday, but it's, it's been a while and and it can get a bit clunky. So if if we recall, the city charter governs ordinance adoption. I guess the general rule is that an ordinance should be read in full on two separate council meetings. However, the city charter provides a mechanism to adopt it at one single city council meeting, provided no city counselor objects to the reading of the ordinance by title only. And so for that reason, we have the two motions to have the the first reading by title only and the second reading by title only. And then we have a third motion to adopt the ordinance. And so if a counselor wanted to vote no on the ordinance, I would recommend that you do so on the adoption motion rather than the motions to read by title only just because it it streamlines the process, but that is certainly each counselor's prerogative.
Okay. All right. So we we are, this does bring us to ordinance two zero seven two, the ordinance vacating the portions of the alleyway within block ten, Schaefer's addition to Central Place, Coos County, Oregon. And for the ordinance, I can ask the staff to give a report. Is it similar to the report that you just gave? Okay, so I don't know if that piece is necessary. If there's anything else that came up in the last twenty seconds. Okay, so then I'll now entertain a motion to have the first reading be by title only.
I'll move the first reading is read by title only.
Okay, at a first from Counselor Gall, a second from Counselor Nordoff. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the first reading be by title only of, I guess, the first reading of ordinance two zero seven to be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number two zero seven two and ordinance vacating portions of alleyway contained within block ten, Schaefer's addition to Central Place, Coos County, Oregon.
All right. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to have the second reading. Oh, yes.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Are we good?
Yeah, my mistake.
I'll now entertain a motion to have the second reading be by title only.
I move to have ordinance two zero seven two read by title only to the record.
First from Counselor Jones, a second from Counselor Gar Boden. Any first and second, any discussion? All in favor of second reading of ordinance two zero seven two to be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number two zero seven two and ordinance vacating portions of alleyway contained within block ten. Schaefer's addition to Central Place, Coos County, Oregon.
Okay. So then that should take me to being able to do a poll vote. Right? Okay. All right, so Counselor Jones, how do you?
And Madam Mayor, we we would need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
And, okay.
And then there could be some discussion after there was a motion, a first and a second.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance two zero seven two? First from Counselor Gar Boden, a second from Counselor Hamilton. Is there any discussion? All in favor of adopting ordinance two zero seven two? We would do the roll call vote now. Right?
So you've had your first, your second, you've asked for discussion. You can now call the question.
Call the question. Okay. He would. Yeah, so close to getting it smooth. Counselor Jones, how do you stand on the ordinance?
I am in favor of ordinance two seven, two zero seventeen.
Counselor Gar Boden. Counselor Hamilton.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Ball.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Schultz.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Nordoff.
I two and for the ordinance.
And I two and for the ordinance. So the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Okay. All right. I was getting cocky there. The, so that was two zero seven two, and that it takes care of that. Number seven on the agenda is something we discussed in the work session last night. It's a letter of support for D L C D Technical Assistance Grants. Is there a motion for this agenda item?
I move to authorize Mayor and deputy to sign the letter.
Okay, second, first from Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor of authorizing to sign the letter of support for D L C D, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight on the agenda tonight was action, if any resulting from any executive session, and we did not have an exception, executive session or action. So that'll take us to number nine, which is our city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Couple updates. I want to talk to you about the exciting Main Street Talk of the Town. It's going this Thursday, September twenty-eighth from six to eight. It'll be in the event tent. We now have free Wi-Fi there. It's very much like we did with Zipline on the webcams. We worked out a deal with D F N, and they're providing free internet to our event tent, which also allows us to do e-commerce with the events and also free Wi-Fi. So that's exciting. But from six to eight on Thursday, you'll want to be there, because if you're hungry, there's delicious appetizers, live music, and great beverages, thanks to cooperation of the Back Alley Bar and Grill. So that's at twenty-four hundred Union. Also, want to point out that we also had a Talk of the Town last week. It was finance, and I'm excited to say not one single person from the public showed up.
Oh.
So does anyone really care about the city finances? We certainly hear them always say, you're spending your money this way and that way, and this was a great opportunity to hear from our finance director, but that's okay. Because we recorded the whole thing and we put it online. So we know that all those ten thousand six hundred people that are watching right now are going to go jump over the internet and watch that video and actually see where all their tax dollar monies are going.
Perfect.
Because I really appreciate public comments like that, but I'll try to address that in a moment. Because if you follow what we're doing or at minimum, just read the city administrators' report, you know what's going on in our city. And so God bless Jeff, who did all that work, only to see us cheerleading staff, department heads, listening.
It was a great presentation. I watched it on Zoom and I.
It was a great one.
It was really, really useful. It probably got me questions.
So over at the fire department, we've got our second Ram fifty-five hundred chassis. So they're going to go ahead and finally supply team issues. We're going to get that a second chassis, and that'll be our rapid attack vehicles. And so we're expecting those to be built out. It'll take the wear and tear off of the larger equipment, and so we should have all of that here by the end of the year. The Parks Department did a escort to Southwestern Community College Walk Educational Tour of our parks, sharing the beauty and knowledge of our green spaces. And so that was great. The Police Department has conducted interviews for what we anticipate will be our it'll fill the last remaining vacant position and will actually be at full staff. And so that's exciting. We've had a lot of officers that have gone off to the academy. And when they come back, depending on where they are, if we don't get laterals, we have to team up. So usually you have them teamed up in cars. And so it'd be good to finally get to a point that we'll be fully staffed, and then everyone will be out of the academy, not on the road. So it's great. Speaking of the Police Department, I mentioned last meeting that we had a burglary over at the pool. We worked with staff. We put video online. It between one of our officers to recognize the individual to a tip that came in from online. There is a gentleman that was arrested and housed for burglary, to theft, to criminal trespass, to probation violation, among other opportunities. And then the final Free Saturday for swimming under the Advanced Health Grant will be one o'clock to five o'clock on Saturday, September thirtieth. So the city administrator's report, as always, is on our website. It's linked off our Facebook page. And it's the most entertaining reading. And you don't have to pay two bucks for it, so it's free. It's a reference to two bucks that if you go buy the paper, just so you know, two bucks. Two bucks. Well, okay, thank you.
All right, that is the city administrators' reports. For committee reports. I know that Counselor Hamilton and I have we, have we met since we had the? I mean, we had the, did we debrief the group, though? I don't think we have yet, have we? All right, so we had our first special events committee. And in that committee, there was a couple of local people, and we came up with some ideas to solicit feedback from the residents of North Bend. We created a survey. And so I have shared that out on my mayor page. If you see that out there, I'm going to actually ask the city to also share it. That's really good feedback so far, too. So I will also probably take that. You can create a Q R code and a link to the survey. So I've got some different community events that I'll be going to, so I can take that around, see how many, how much feedback we can get to bring back to our next meeting, which is October fifth. And and we'll be ready to probably present something to the council a little bit more detail in the next meeting. Am I forgetting anything? No, yeah. All right, so look for that survey out there. And was there, was there a fire committee or anything else to report on? No, okay. And so that was our, you know, actually, we do have the House Bill forty-one twenty.
Forty-one twenty-three.
That the city administrator and I sit on, and we also have the director here. So actually, I will invite Andrew Brainer up to the table to help me out with this committee report. So you know, that I do like fun stuff in the city, and I do like also promoting things in North Bend. But I also know how to get my hands dirty and work really hard to try to help out with some of the really difficult things that we have going on in the community. And one of them is being on this task force. And and so I'll have Andrew, you got like sixty seconds, so.
You got it.
That's sure, that's, that's that.
That's good.
I bet you the short, the short report, and then we.
Sounds good.
Yeah, direct people to the website where they can find more. So Andrew, want to give the group a kind of an update of what we've been working on? What you've been doing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council and staff, city administrator, and those attendants tonight. Just some real quick, what's been going on since I've talked last time? There's the advisory, our executive board and our board has been meeting monthly, and progress has been happening. I just want to give kudos out to our, our board. And progress has been happening. I just want to give kudos out to our, our board that, uh. Extended a hand and really worked to work with their governor and their staff, um. Most of everybody's seen so far is that we've been approved of one point nine million dollars to house people. And help Coos County out. So I'm very excited to see where we go from here on that. Um, I'm still continually meeting with our faith-based organizations, our primary carers and our tribes and our veterans and city governments. There's a couple of things that we're continuing to work on, um, especially, uh, taking a look at maybe possible like a. Peer sport specials volunteer program that could help out with our law enforcement long term. And so we're taking a look at that. A lot of the partners are coming together. I'm just facilitating it. And they're working very well. Um, a couple of things I've done on spot, um, not just by going, um, out with our law enforcement. To, uh, see the, uh, progress and see what's going on. I went out and worked out with some of our partners recently, um, with Adap, Coos Health and Wellness, Burya First Step. Um, the HIV Alliance, um, one location was Charleston. They provided, uh, flu shots for some of the homeless that need flu shots. Information if they need help with certain things and food opportunities as well. Most recently, I was just in Lakeside and went very well, um, in the organization they had. And, uh, I'm looking forward to see the continued success. I'm attending a resource event tomorrow there near, uh, Burya First Step. To work with the homeless as well for tomorrow and just see what the progress they are making. So. Uh, moving forward, we're continually moving on. We're still looking for a project manager and we're still looking for an administrative assistant for our, uh. For our programs. So, um, if you need any more information, it's on Cardinal Services, uh, website. And then also soon to be on deed, so.
And there's, there's so much information out there. I mean, we have, we put stuff on the, um, on our, just our regular webpage for the city of North Bend. Of all the different things that we're, you know, doing with the homeless, the coordinated response. Um, our pilot, the pilot program that we're part of, is it eight counties? Is it, is it?
Uh, statewide, there's eight pilots.
Eight pilots.
We're one.
Okay, it does seem when we're on these calls with the other eight that we are really moving in the right direction. Compared to other people. And I want to thank, um, Andrew for that. Um, this is, you know, it's, you, you do listen to the public comments. And you're like, gosh, you know, it's if. You can't just build houses in the middle of the county. We don't own property there. It doesn't work like that. And I do encourage everybody, this is complicated to understand. Please read the, um, information that the city administrator puts out and including the, the finance presentation is on. Um, is it, I'm guessing on our, on our webpage. And so, you know, it's, I understand when people see things like the visitor center that we're developing. And how they're like, wait, how come you can do that and not build housing? Those are different buckets of money. Um, so just like the police car, that's a different bucket of money. You can't use something like that. So. Um, I, you know, these are, they're complicated situations, but the relationships that we are making statewide are so important. And I think, you know, it's, it's pretty phenomenal that we went from basically no funding out of the government's off, governor's office. Literally, the, we were going to be left off the table to having the mayor of Coos Bay and the city administrators from Coos Bay. And I and, um, one of the commissioners sit down and walk away with now one point nine million dollars, which, you know, is still. Just a, a piece of it, but a piece of the solution. So, um, this is the work that we are doing and, um. It's going to take a while, but we're making strides.
To add on, we just, uh, hired ourselves new grant writers for the program as well. They'll be working with as well to look for different grants to. Continue to succeed and help out people that need help, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Committee report's done on ten and that'll take us to council comments. So let's, uh, let's start in the middle here. Let's go with councillor Gaul. We've missed him a bit.
Yeah, I've been on, uh, two different little giddy episodes. Had a really good time in Canada and then we had to go to a wedding in Tucson, Arizona. And when we say we live in God's country, I'm a firm believer in that. I wouldn't move out of here for nothing. Uh, but anyway, it's, it's, we do, we, we've got a really fortunate place to live. And then I want to comment probably, I've been sitting here thinking. I was in Canada, or Canada during the North Bend Marshfield game and that's quite possibly. The only game in my life I've missed and was I so tickled to get a. Play by play from my wife on the phone. Uh, I kind of miss Dave Walker, but we got, we had Liz Gaul doing it. So. Uh, anyway, uh, to have North Bend, uh, beat Marshfield, that was. That, that tickled the heck out of me. So, that's all I got.
Okay, councillor Schultz?
Well, I did go to the game, so maybe I took your place because I usually at being, working in the elementary school, sometimes I don't necessarily get to the high school events. And so it was a really good game. It was great to see everybody, um, school. This is week four of school. We're up and running. We had open house last week at the elementary school level. So again, just getting those kids back. That's what I'm focusing on. And then I did want to mention that Bryn and Haley Busker who came two weeks ago and were honored. They got first and third in Mexico.
First and third, that's amazing.
Yes, they got first and third. And then I don't understand Judo and Kada, but they got first and third two awards. So. It was the first time, so it was very exciting.
Good for them. Okay. Councillor Nordoff?
Uh, let's see, um, along with the invitation to go tours of Lee Fiver, we had, we got invitations to go to the block party. At the Salvation Army and the, I think it was Major David, get the last name, um, had left a really good impression. Um, I did find their facility out in Empire and the place was popping, lots and lots of kids and families. And I guess Star, Starbucks had donated funds for bike giveaway. So they've been having this block party thing in their, in their gym, uh, I guess every month. And, um, Mr. Milliron was there. It's good to see him and his wife. And their. Kind of their, their lead of, uh, fellow from Portland came down and he's got like an Irish accent. So that was interesting. The other thing I noted was that, um, um, I guess there was a walk, uh, to walk toward the light. It was a suicide, uh, awareness. And I, I sat through a day of training for being like a. Uh, some, someone who could lead other workshops. And the waterfall clinic, um, has, I think he's in kind of in charge of suicide awareness programs for the entire state. He's, he's at like a really advanced level in training people and, and speaking to this problem. Oregon is insanely high among all fifty states in the amount of suicide that happens. So I just, that's. It was a, it was an eye opener for me. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll start down here with councillor Jones.
Okay. Um, so I wanted to, um, thank the finance director for his really good presentation. I wasn't able to come. It's done, um, on a series of questions. How much does a foot of road cost? And, and just like the series of questions that the average person, including me, would say, yeah, why, why are these so costly? Just really breaking it down. It was excellent. Um, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I spoke out of order. So I apologize for that. When I, 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 I think we're not allowed to say anything in a council meeting. Maybe I'm, okay, never mind, never mind. Uh, I thought the moment I spoke out of order because I had a comment.
Oh, well, okay, you're forgiven.
Okay, yeah, I, I didn't want to make that a habit. Um, I also wanted to, uh, say that when we, we were at the neighborhood watch meeting, the community meeting. Um, one of the things that people, we, we had a bit of discussion on was some kind of peer community support with the police. And so I'm really pleased to hear that that phrase came out of the homeless coalition. Um, and we'll be very curious about how we can roll that out. Um. Uh, there are several successful sort of community-based. I don't want to use the word policing, but community-based, peer-based support that, that does support the police across the country. And so we've got some good examples and I think that feeds into some of the things people said. So that's great. Um, the homelessness problem, I just want to say this out loud. It's the elephant in the room here. The homelessness problem has so many dimensions, not the least of which are that in the US, we put our individual rights above government control. And then in property rights of private owners above the police being able to access those properties. Um, it comes into this juxtaposition of our values around taking care of one another. Uh, juxtaposed against an adult should be able to, uh, take responsibility for their actions. Um, it hits all the ways that when you see a city budget in the millions of dollars, uh, that, that's nothing like any of our home budgets. And yet there are, those monies are very restricted and, and even paying for people to put forth efforts. Makes these, you know, millions of dollars not stretch that far in a lot of ways to, to a person or in a household. So that the camping ordinance and the homeless problems that we have, uh, just really hit a lot of dimensions. That every single person can feel and they require us to really learn as a citizen. Even, you know, even if you're not on a board, to just really pay more attention and do some more reading. And again, get to your council, get your voice heard through those council processes. I think Matt and I had a pre discussion about how, you know, the council can't really come to a privately formed meeting. Um, in or, uh, without, um, risking not complying with public meeting law. So there are wonderful avenues, but in the end, come to the council meetings, put your comment in the record, get read in the record. Have the people that support it sign that and re, you know, just, it, it's, it's so important to be counted on the official public records. To move things forward, so.
Thank you for listening to my dead dog. All right, thank you. Councillor Garbonin doesn't have anything, so I get double time apparently. Then, oh, you councillor Hamilton, sorry. Wait, I see I went out of order here. You have nothing. You have nothing and.
Uh, I've been real busy lately, but, uh, I haven't had. A reason that I could go to staff and fill this week, uh, few things in my head. And, uh, I just want to say I appreciate the, or, uh, city staff for being accommodating and flexible and. Uh, I see Macy this morning was running around like I was and hopping from place to place like I was. And I'm like, hey, he's in the same boat I am. So, you know, thanks guys.
Yeah, it is, it, and the staff work so hard and to think that. You know, comments are made about, you know, can you trim any more from this, from the city staff is just insane that. How many people did we have in the parks department originally? I, I don't know if Chief Brown remembers. We have three now. And what was it at the heist?
Well, for instance, go ahead and just say streets, streets was at, what, seven? Seven or eight?
Seven or eight people and now two?
Uh, there are four.
Or?
Yeah, but they were three for several years.
Okay.
But we started the succession plan, so we were able to get them up to four.
So I, I know how limited the, you know, just how lean that the city is running. And I do appreciate all the hours that everybody puts in and, and, and not only in the city staff and the public safety, so that never goes unnoticed. So thank you for that. Um, I want to say that I was at the game and I enjoyed the game extremely well. But what I enjoyed more was seeing the principal and vice, was the principal and vice principal, right, from Marshfield.
Yes.
Yes, holding up a sign that said it's a great day to be a bulldog after a bet was lost. So I hope this becomes our tradition. Um, and like what a good way to show the kids that just, it's, it's fun to have a lighthearted rivalry. And there was funny pictures of them smiling and not smiling and teasing each other. And I just think it sends a really good message to everybody in the community. Um, that, you know, some things are just meant to kind of be like spirited like that. So that was really fun. Um, I also want to say that I was really impressed with the Main Street manager, um, presentation last night. Um, and the other department heads that showed us the plans of what the visitor center can look like and the pocket park. And, you know, when you are really looking at, um, moving a city forward, you have to look at all of those pieces. We need to make sure that things are, we, you know, the homeless, it, we are in crisis. It is a, we are still in a housing crisis and a homeless crisis. So we have to focus on that. But you also can't neglect the rest of the city. You have to do those other things as well. And, um, that's why I will try to do everything I can to make sure the finance director's presentation goes viral. Um, because I want to share that out with everyone so they can understand when we are able to do things like the visitor center, where that money comes from. Because I think that piece can be really complicated. Um, because what we can do with the, um, the tourism and lodging tax. And the urban renewal dollars to, um, just highlight our downtown and bring more business into our downtown. That will then bleed into the rest of the city is invaluable. So, um, I know that there's a lot of moving parts to that and those, those. You know, the designs are just conceptual at this point, but I think that they're on the right track. And, um, it's really exciting to see that and some of the other things that are going to be happening, like another mural, um, that a, uh, business will be putting up. So I appreciate all of that. There is another Civil War game for the volleyball kids. It's what, girls volleyball, I believe, this Thursday. So if you want to keep going out and supporting all of the, um, athletics, there's lots to probably find on the, um, North Bend High School and Middle School websites. So that is my council comments for this evening. Now, we do have item twelve, um, that was moved to the regular council session agenda. And that is the contingent award of the contract for the visitors' center remodel, seven, um, on California Street, on page eighty-four. So, um, is there a motion from the council?
I move that the council award the visitor information center remodel project to be to, is it Terrell and Sun LLC? In the amount of two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cents contingent upon no valid bid award protest being received.
All right. That was on, and that is, you got that on page seventy-six is where that motion was, right? That suggested motion.
Oh, it's, um, okay.
Isn't it seventy-six?
Oh, yeah, I thought we jumped it.
Yes, I know. I was just going to look where that suggests, that, what, everything that you just read is on page seventy-six, suggests, yeah. Is it on seventy-six?
No, it's in the renewal.
Oh, okay. So it's on seventeen. All right. So that, uh, was a first from councillor Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from councillor Nordoff. Um, any discussion? Okay, all in favor then of the council to award the V I C remodel project to Z Terrell and Sun LLC in the amount of two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty percent. Contingent upon no valid bid award protest being reserved, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, um, that will go ahead and conclude all the items for the regular session agenda. And I know we have an urban renewal meeting. So to our city recorder, would you like me to adjourn this meeting and then move in? To the minute, okay. So, yep, so we'll go ahead and adjourn the council meeting and take a two-minute recess before we. To the minute, okay, so, yep, so we'll go ahead and adjourn the council meeting and take a two-minute recess before we.